And read our Zoom information as we get started. So, good evening and welcome to our January 20th Douglas County Board of County Commissioners Business Meeting. We want to welcome any of you who are at the Douglas County Courthouse or joining us online. I do just want to pass on a bit of information regarding how we'll run our meetings on Zoom during this time of social distancing. If visual aids are used during the meeting, the presenter will share their screen with the call. Participants will not be able to view them without a computer, smartphone, or tablet. So, we do ask that all participants describe any visual aids. All participants will be entered into the meeting with their audio muted, meaning the commission and the public will not be able to hear you. Presenters will be unmuted when their agenda item comes up. We ask that all online presenters who use good conference call etiquette and mute their lines when not speaking and introduce themselves each time they speak. If you have public comment on an agenda item or under regular public comment, please use the raise your hand function on Zoom. Staff will call on you and unmute you. We ask that speakers give their name and address if they feel comfortable for the minutes. The county reserves the right to shut off the microphone and remove any speaker from the meeting if they are vulgar, rude, or inappropriate. The chat function has been disabled. A recording of this meeting will be available on our website after the meeting. So, let's start with the consent agenda. Does anyone have any items they would like to pull off of the consent agenda?
I do not.
I do not.
Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Commissioner, I would ask that we see if any member of the public wants to remove an item from the consent agenda.
Do we have any members of the public in the courthouse with you?
No, we do not.
Right. Do we have any members of the public online that would wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? I see none commissioners. Thank you. So, I would move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, on to the regular agenda. So, the first item on our regular agenda is from the planning department. Consider a site plan for propane bulk plant at North 300 Road and East 1260 Road. Comments from the commissioners? Or do we have a presentation from the staff?
Yes, commissioners, we have a presentation from Mary Miller with our Metropolitan Planning Organization. Mary?
Good evening. I'll share my screen here. Good evening. I'm Mary Miller, City-County Planner. And this is a site plan for a bulk propane plant for Heartland Propane. The facility would consist of a 30,000 gallon bulk propane tank where Heartland trucks would fill, and then they would deliver the propane to customers in the area. The property is located in the southeast corner of the highways 56 and 59. It takes access from East 1260 Road, which is just adjacent to Highway 59 and parallel with it. That is a local road. This property is within three miles of Baldwin City. So, thus, the site plan was provided to the city for their review and comments. And their development director informed us they had no concerns or objections to the development. The property is currently being farmed, but it is ZB, General Business, and was plotted in 2009 to accommodate commercial development. This graphic from the site plan shows the location of the propane tank. It'll be in the northern part of the property. It does meet all the setback requirements of the general business district. This detail from the site plan shows the layout of the facility. It'll have a two-way access drive on East 1260 Road, but a one-way drive around the propane tank. The access drive on East 1260 Road complies with the access restrictions that were placed on the platte, and the county engineer has approved this location. They will need to get an access permit from the county before they put in the access point, and I believe they'll need to put in a covert as well. Willow Springs Fire District Number Three approved the layout of the facility, but noted that they wanted a safety plan prior to the commencement of the operations. And therefore, the certificate of occupancy will be contingent upon them providing that safety plan. And Willow Springs Fire District informing zoning and codes office that they've received it and it's acceptable. This closer detail shows some of the other features. There will be one light pole, a 20-foot tall light pole at the bulkhead where the loading and unloading will be done. This will be an LED light. It will be fully shielded and it'll be 3,000 K light color temperature. This is a loading area only, though we know employees on site, so there's no parking or any other facilities on site for employees. A six-foot tall chain link fence will be installed around the bulkhead. Here's I'm outlining here. That's for security. And I meant to show before, let me go back to the previous slide. And this shows that there is vegetation to the north and the east that buffers to use from nearby properties and the roadway. Four new trees will be planted along the west. It's not intended to screen the facility, but just to provide a buffer and a more pleasant appearance from the roadway. And so, the applicant has added those to the site plan. The proposed site plan is compliant with this approval criteria noted in Section 12-307-3.11 of the zoning regulations, as noted in the staff report, and staff recommends approval of the site plan. The applicant is present today, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from commissioners?
Um, I had a question. Thanks for that, Mary. You actually addressed both my questions, and I just wanted to elaborate on the safety plan because I was curious, especially since there's no onsite employees, what that looked like and whether or not that was on something that would be on file with the county, with your office, or with fire and medical, it sounds like. Do you have any information to share about what that plan will look like? Or do we have that included yet in the application?
We don't have it yet. That was tied to the city occupancy. But Dave Stewart, the applicant, could probably explain more about that safety plan and also just the safety of the site in general.
I'm David Stewart. I'm with Heartland Propane. There will be a fire safety plan on file with the local fire department. It gives a response plan. It gives a access to the bulkhead, like Mary said earlier. Also, the bulk plant will have an emergency shutdown built into it. And so, if there's ever a problem, it'll automatically shut down on its own. And so, it's got safety features built into it along with having a safety plan in place with your local fire department.
Great. Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Commissioner Kelly, Mary, just curious. The property that's to the east, is that the owner of the property? Or does the propane company owner, propane company own the property?
The property to the east is under different ownership. The propane company just owns their property.
Thanks.
Do we have any comments or questions from any public that might be online?
I'm not seeing any, Commissioner.
And I don't have any here at the courthouse.
I'll move to approve the site plan. Sarah, will you help me out and tell me if I need to be specific about, like, the site plan number?
I believe that, Mary, I do believe that's generally, we like folks to include the site plan number in the motion. Is that correct, Mary?
Mary Miller, City-County Planner. Yes, that helps, I think, with the identifying what project we're on when people look over the video later.
Okay. I move to approve the site plan SP-20-00419 for propane bulk plant at North 300 Road and East 1260 Road.
I second. And we'll put it pro vote. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we will move on to appointments. I do have a bit of a list for us to consider for appointments to boards and commissions for commissioners to serve on. And so, I'd like to just kind of take this list, commission and board, one at a time so we can have some conversation and hopefully decide who amongst the three of us will be serving. So, if we could start with the Affordable Housing Advisory Board, and we'll open that up for discussion.
I am very interested in serving on that board. It's work that I have been proxy to in my role at the Willow and working with folks individually, and is also something that has touches my life personally, having grown up with a lot of housing instability in this community, and very interested in being a part of the advisory board's work to really address those problems.
I'm glad you're willing to do that, Commissioner Reed. This is Commissioner Kelly, and I will move to appoint Commissioner Reed to the Affordable Housing Advisory Board.
This is Commissioner Portio. I second. And we will put it to a vote. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you.
Fantastic. Let us move on to the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. This, I will just start off by saying, this is one I have a lot of interest in. This is both an area of research and an area of passion for me. So, I am excited to be on the other side of Zoom, having watched those meetings over the past year.
That makes sense to me. I've moved to approve, to appoint Commissioner Portio to the CJCC.
Second, and thank you, Commissioner Portio, for taking that on. Appreciate it.
Thank you both. We'll put it to a vote. All of those in favor say aye.
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 And we will move on to the Behavioral Health Leadership Coalition.
So, I'm really proud of our work so far with the Behavioral Health Leadership Coalition and the opening of the new campus. We've opened two sites. Looking forward to the third one being completed. Would really appreciate Commissioner's support in serving on that coalition, I guess you would say. It's not really a board. It's a coalition. Yeah.
Yeah, I would really appreciate your presence on that, in that space. Commissioner Kelly, having been here in your role for the past two years and been an integral part of the work so far, it makes sense for me that you're there. So, I've moved to appoint Commissioner Kelly to the Behavioral Health Leadership Coalition. I'm getting all the acronyms day by day.
This is Commissioner Portio. I second, and we'll bring it to a vote. All of those in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you. And we will move on to the Biosciences and Technology Business Center, BTBC.
So, I would just say I've been very involved in workforce development across Douglas County for quite some time. And I have an intimate knowledge of the Peaslee Tech facility, having been in the building right next door for about six years. But this is one that I really would like to expand our work into, in the BTBC, and would be happy to serve in that role.
This is Commissioner Portio. Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. I appreciate your willingness to serve on that one. And I would move to appoint Commissioner Kelly to the Biosciences and Technology Business Center.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. And we'll vote. All of those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. And we'll move to the Destination Management Incorporated, DMI.
I would just, just for the, any public that might be listening, because this is an acronym that, you know, we don't talk often about. So, just, just for anyone who might be listening, Destination Management Incorporated was formed when Freedoms Frontier National Heritage Area came to Lawrence and Douglas County and serves a multi-county region. I'm going to get the number of counties wrong, but it is well over a dozen. Destination Management Incorporated has worked to sort of help ensure their, their presence here in Lawrence and Douglas County and also work with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, which is known as Explore Lawrence. So, it includes representatives from both that board, the Freedoms Frontier Board, and the City and County Commissions to just sort of keep a pulse on how we can sort of stay at the top of, of, of that important, you know, regional heritage work.
Thanks for that, Sarah. I appreciate that. And I, I have some interest in this one, and I was also curious, Sarah, the Freedom Heritage.
The Freedoms Frontier National Heritage?
Thank you. Is that a, is that a federal program? Or is it, is it, so there are multiple, like, examples of that throughout the country? And this is a regional one that is kind of home-based in our community?
Correct. So, a national heritage area is designated by the National Park Service.
Okay.
And that's, they're called national heritage areas. I believe there are roughly a dozen or so of those across the nation. And they, they really vary. You know, there's some, there's, I know there's one around the, you know, in, around, trying to think of where another regional heritage area is. I think there's some down in Alabama around the civil rights marches in, in that area. I think there's one in the northeast, you know, in Pennsylvania around coal and our, our history with industry. So, they're, they're suggested by local groups and to celebrate the particular heritage of an area. And then you have to have the designation from the federal government. When you get that designation, it helps you draw down dollars from the National Park Service to help promote that in your region. Our region is both in Kansas and Missouri, and it's Freedoms Frontier for the important role that both, you know, eastern Kansas and western Missouri played in, you know, civil rights and also in the Civil War. And it highlights both those things. But then also with the frontier part, you know, there is some focus on westward expansion and conversations about the settlement of, of the Midwest. And I highly encourage, you know, commissioners to, to, and I can make some contacts to get to know more about specifically our work in that, in that arena.
Well, well, thank you. That was a super helpful explanation. And I, it seems like cool work, and I would be interested in joining that. I love, I love history and maps, and it would make my townie heart happy to join some of those conversations. And it sounds like that's a, it's kind of a unique thing that we have in our community. So.
Hi, this is Commissioner Portio, and I move to appoint Commissioner Reed to Destination Management E.
Second.
We'll bring it to a vote. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Fantastic. We will move on to E Community for Douglas County. Sarah, could you provide a bit more information on this one as well, for folks who are listening?
Actually, Jill Joliker, I might put her on the spot and have her provide a little bit of background on to what this organization does for us.
Sure. Good evening. The E Community is a, is a designation. The E stands for Entrepreneurship Community. And that is associated with our partnership, the Douglas County's partnership with Network Kansas, which is an offshoot, not-for-profit organization that, offshoot of the Kansas Department of Commerce under the Brownback administration many years ago. And it is a small, it's heart, it's a small business loan program. It's kind of the core functions of it. But at its heart, it's to promote an entrepreneurial environment for Douglas County and the community, cities that are outside of the Lawrence metro area within Douglas County. So, we work closely with the cities of LaCompton, Baldwin City, and Udora to each, each appoint a, there's an elected official and a member of the public from each of those three communities that serve on our leadership board that vote in favor of different loans that are approved, are sometimes not approved by, based on recommendations from our financial review team, which is encompassed by local bankers and finance-minded, entrepreneur-minded folks like the Kansas Business Center and Will Katz and the great team that's there that review all of the loans first. That review loans, look at different initiatives that relate to entrepreneurship in the community, support our youth entrepreneurship challenge that we've been doing the last few years. Largely really good feel-good stuff. And we've got a nice event coming up tomorrow. It's a kind of an organic group, but there are some pretty strict parameters around the loan program that keep us meeting on a bi-monthly basis.
Thanks for that, Jill. That was super thorough. I have been poking around and doing my research on some of the E Community stuff and have an interest in it and have had the event that you all have scheduled for tomorrow about equitable ecosystems for entrepreneurs. I've had that on my calendar for a few weeks, and I'm excited about it. And also, two of those three community, Douglas County communities are in District Two. And so, I'd really like the opportunity to make some more connections with those communities.
This is Commissioner Portio. Thank you, Commissioner Reed. I would move to appoint Commissioner Reed to the E Community for Douglas County.
Second.
All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
And we will move on to the Economic Development Corporation Board, EDC.
So, I'll speak up on this one. I attended their meeting. Gosh, that was just yesterday. It seems like a long time ago. Some exciting news. I think some of that was detailed in the paper. But if you haven't had a chance to read the article, some expansion of Plasticon. You know, it's so important to grow our tax base smartly. And I think that's what this group is really looking and investing those dollars to bring those businesses here to Douglas County. So, I'd be happy to continue to serve on that. They, they don't meet that often, but, but glad to meet with them and share news back with our commission after those meetings.
This is Commissioner Portio. Thank you, Commissioner Kelly, for continuing, for wanting to continue to serve on that board. I move to appoint Commissioner Kelly to the Economic Development Corporation Board, DC.
I'll second that motion.
All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And we will move to the Heartland Works Chief Elected Officials Board. Given the name of this board, I have heard its tradition for the chair of the commission to serve on this one. So, I would be very interested in continuing that tradition and serving on this board.
I'm happy to move to appoint Commissioner Portio to, lost the name. What's the acronym again?
Heartland Works.
Heartland Works, yes. Thank you. CWI. And by the way, I just got an email today that I will forward your way.
I appreciate that.
I'll second that motion.
And all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we will move to the Metropolitan Planning Organization Policy Board.
So, this is a group that meets fairly often, actually, looking at sort of large-scale planning across the entire, it's sort of odd, I think, to sort of think of us as a metropolitan, but we do classify. It is a mix of folks from a number of different organizations. Glad to represent us if commissioners think that's a good idea.
I think your experience makes sense there, and I would appreciate that and having your insight. So, this Commissioner Reed here, I will move to appoint Commissioner Kelly to the, let me get the full name, Metropolitan Planning Organization Policy Board.
This is Commissioner Portio. I second that, and we'll bring it to a vote. All of those in favor say aye.
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 And we will move on to the Peaslee Tech Board of Directors. I am really excited that we have Peaslee Tech here in our community. And in my day job, I get to work with all of our community college partners in the Kansas City area with, for the University of Kansas. So, I love thinking about community colleges and technical colleges. And I've been really excited to see Peaslee Tech grow. So, I would love to learn more about technical education here in our community and serve on that board, if you all would have me.
I move to appoint Commissioner Portio to the Peaslee Tech Board.
I'll second that motion. Makes sense.
I will bring it to a vote. All of those in favor say aye.
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 And that, those are all of the appointments and boards and commissions I have on my list for the evening. Do we have any other appointments to consider this evening?
So, commissioners, I would bring up the public incentive. Kirk from the City of Lawrence. It's the Public Incentive Review Committee. I currently have been serving on that. It meets only when there's a public incentive. I've brought up to pass commissions. It's a little tricky in that we, we often sometimes approve public incentives that come through that advisory. I think we need to keep talking about it. But in the meantime, until we make that decision, I'm happy to continue to serve in that appointed role at this time, if that's okay with commissioners.
So, this is Commissioner Portio. I read through that there are bylaws today, and it looks like all appointments to Kirk actually go through the city commission. So, I don't know that we can weigh in on you continuing to serve. I think from our commission, it makes sense, and I appreciate you being willing to continue in that role.
Yeah, it's not in their bylaws, but if you check on their, I read those bylaws too. Thanks for sending those, Sarah. But if you look on their website, it says appointed by the county commission. So, it says one member of the Douglas County Commission appointed by the county commission. So, you are correct. I guess they have to then approve our approval. This is why we need to look at these rules. So, you know, what would happen if we approved somebody and they didn't approve it? So, I just think it's, it's probably way in the weeds of approvals of approvals. But, but if we have one come up until we look at those bylaws, be, like I said, be happy to serve in that.
I think this is Commissioner Portio. I think that makes sense. Do we need to vote on that one, or do we just let it continue to go as it has been going?
What do you think, Sarah?
I think it can continue as it's going. And, and I'll make sure to communicate that to city staff that Commissioner Kelly is interested to continue to serve. But we also do have questions about how this is structured, and we hope to find time to work on that soon.
That sounds fantastic. Thank you, Sarah. So, with that, I think that we are done with the discussion of appointments. And so, we will move to general public comment. Do we have anyone who would like to make general public comment?
Commissioners, I don't have anyone here at the courthouse for that.
And I don't see anyone online.
Thank you. So, we will move to Commissioner and/or Administrator miscellaneous. So, Sarah, we'll start with you. Do you have any miscellaneous items for us?
Thank you, Commissioner. And I apologize. I had been working on my, my memo to you very last minute, and it is not in your packet online. But I, so I'll just walk you through it, and then I'll make sure you get a copy tomorrow. Let me see here. A big thing I wanted to notice is that we do have a work session planned for next week at four o'clock. So, if, if the commissioner is available to meet at four o'clock, the District Attorney and Criminal Justice Services would like to present on their enhanced diversion program. So, we will be adding that to the agenda for next week. And we are working on some additional work sessions for into February. So, please stay tuned. I do anticipate we will have work sessions for the next couple of weeks. I'm just trying to get together the final pieces of them all. And in the packet, you're going to just see that there's a notice for the health board meeting that was yesterday and the housing authority board meeting that's coming up next week. So, I'll make sure the commission gets a copy of that, and we will make sure to add it to our online agenda for today. And that's all I have, commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Do we have any miscellaneous items from other commissioners?
This is Commissioner Reed. None for me today.
None for me. I think I mentioned the EDC meeting that we had. And there's a really great video that the chamber has put together, I'm sure. Sarah, I don't know, is it out on their website yet? Have you seen it?
I, it was supposed to get posted today, but I did not check to see if it got posted, but it hopefully will be out soon.
Commissioners, I think it does a really nice job of just showing what's happened over the past years when it comes, over the past year. I mean, when you put it all together, didn't know that that was one year of work. In a pandemic, it's, it's pretty impressive. Really appreciate the work of our chamber staff who's, who's done that. And all the partners that are involved with that. So if you get a chance to look at it, it'd probably be worth your time. It's only about three to five minutes. So that's the best kind of information.
Well, and I saw that they even have like a two-page overview that's beautifully laid out. So even quicker, more digestible information. I always appreciate that.
I have a quick question for Sarah. And Sarah, you included it in our memo, but I thought it, I mean, in an email to to commissioners, but I think it might be good for the public to hear a little bit about the rock at the part at Robinson Park a little bit. Just let, let people know what's happening with that.
Uh, yeah, thanks, commissioners. Um, we, so Douglas County has been in communication with the city of Lawrence about the Sacred Prayer Rock that is at Robinson Park and most of the, all the communication so far has been directly between the Con Nation and the city of Lawrence. The complicating factor, while it is a city park and has, has, the rock has been there for over a hundred years or so. It was a, the land is still owned by the county and just a bit of Lawrence history, that was the original site for the Douglas County Court and jail was right there along the river. And so this, when this facility was built in nineteen oh five at the south end of Massachusetts Street, which I had been told was the edge of town when it was built, that site was vacated and that became a city park. We, I had communication with the city manager's office earlier last fall when local groups brought this issue forward and the Con Nation reached out about the Sacred Prayer Rock. The previous commission responded that they were supportive of, of looking to give that rock back to the Con Nation and, and relocate it. Since that time, I haven't had additional conversation with any representatives from the Con Nation. And I've had just a few conversations with the city. I've told them that we stand ready to talk to them about how to proceed with this and how best to move forward. But from what I understand, conversations are still, you know, really at the beginning stages as to how to make that happen at this point. I do anticipate that it will come back before your agenda at some point in time, hopefully in the near future, so that we can get some plans together as to how to just address this issue. Does that help a little bit, Commissioner Kelly?
Yeah, yeah. I just, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I just wanted to, I knew there was some, there was some press about it and it involved the county. And I just wanted people to hear where we are at on it and, and make sure they heard that from us. So.
Great.
This is Commissioner Portio. I appreciate the question for sure, Kelly, in the update, Sarah. I do, I, I was really happy to see that the city commission both voted to return the sacred rock to the Con Nation and issue an apology. So it's good to see that our community is moving in the right direction there. Do we have any other comments, questions, thoughts or big ideas? That's how I end every one of my classes. So I thought it would work here as well.
Big ideas.
It was a little bit of a spark. I'm like, oh, do I have any big ideas? Not at the tip of my tongue this evening.
We already had a very big day in our nation today. So I think that we may all be big ideas out.
It's just like a professor to ask us if we have big ideas at the end of the meeting. I have an assignment for next week. That's great.
Reflection papers are due by Mondays and we'll be ready to discuss them all on Wednesdays. So.
Excellent.
Thank you all. I would say that this is the end and move to adjourn.
Okay, I will second that motion.
All of those in favor, go ahead and leave the Zoom.
Have a good day.
Thank you all.